Welcome to the regularly scheduled county commission meeting. We're here in the commission chambers. It's August first, 2022. It's eleven oh one AM. And we will start out asking you if you have a cellphone to either turn it off or put it on silence. We'll start out with a prayer from San Pasi and the pledge from Barbara Simper.
Our Father, and Son, and God, we thank thee this day with opportunity to gather as citizens in this free country. Pray, Father, that thou be blessed, thus throughout the world, at peace, with warm and welcoming hearts, with empathy and kindness and love. Pray that thou guide the decisions that are made here today, and save these things, and us for these favors, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just for the public's knowledge, in case you're here for some of these reasons, we're gonna table down at the bottom, we're tabling policy four sixty, listing of employee benefits. We're tabling policy four twenty, the holidays. We're tabling the co-op agreement for the airport project, and we're tabling the closed session.
Class D, number one.
No, we're gonna do the public hearing on that, then just not make a decision. Is that correct, John?
Let's just, we'll have Gabby present on those and then take action when they're on.
Okay. Just so if you're here for those, those items, those will be tabled. So, first thing on the agenda would be approval of the minutes for July eighteenth, 2022?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes of July eighteenth, 2022. Is there any reason I can't do them both at the same time?
Oh, go ahead.
June twenty ninth, 2022, unless...
No, that's fine. So I have a motion to approve the minutes for both July eighteenth and June twenty ninth.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Report of warrant, review of countersignatures, certified list of claims?
Commissioners, I've got the warrants from July twenty first, in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and eighteen cents. There wasn't anything large on that one, other than just the normal bills. The next one is July twenty eighth, and that one is in the amount of eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-two cents. There was some internal transfers on this, and a hundred and three thousand, nine eighty-five to Drug Court, and then a five hundred thousand dollar transfer from Food Tax to the Convention Center to help support, to give them some cash in the bank account there. Commissioners, I want to make again note that these warrants were not created, modified, or deleted in the auditor's office, and we do not have any claims today.
No claims. Okay.
We're getting better on them claims, I think, aren't we, Mike?
Think they're doing better, getting things done right.
Okay, cemetery certificates.
Jensen Cemetery, Leon K. Smeuan and Kimberly Smeuan, Platte B., Block Seven, spaces twenty-four B. and twenty-four D. Mazer Fairview Cemetery, Danny L. Cook and Lori J. Cook, Lot two sixty-two A., Space one, and Lot three hundred, Space four, Lot three hundred A., Spaces one and two. Mazer Fairview Cemetery, Michael Corbin and Jo- Joni Corbin. Mazer Columbarium, Westside, G. Two. Rock Point Cemetery, Phase Two, Clarence Sherwood, Jr., and Jan A. Kramer, Block three thirty-one, Lot B., Space fifteen. And Vernal Memorial Park, Ken Laudermalk, Lot two fifty-two, Space thirteen.
And all of them?
That's all of them.
Okay. Entertained a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the cemetery certificates as presented.
Second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thanks, Mike. Tax matters today. Seeing none, windy, nothing?
All right, Brandon.
Okay. Business licenses?
Good morning. Gabby Hawks Blackburn with Community Development. We have five today. The first two are home base, and then the last three are kind of unique.
Okay.
Would you like to hear the home base together?
Are they the same?
So, the first one is J. and M. Zepela Welding. This is located at twenty-three seventy-five North, twenty-five hundred West, parcel number four, thirty-three, seven. This is in the RA one zone. So, they do onsite, onsite welding. So, they don't weld at this location. This location is just used as a home-based office, and they park their welding truck there, which doesn't count as a commercial vehicle at this time. The next one is Rhythm and Mind Music Therapy, located at thirty-one sixty North, twenty-five hundred West, parcel number four, nineteen one fifty-nine, also in, oh, this one's in the A. One Zone. This, she's a music therapist. She works with schools and hospitals and stuff, and goes to those locations to do music therapy with, for persons with special needs. So, the home is also just used as a home-based office. The conditions on these ones are just to follow all home-based business rules and regulations.
Okay.
First one is J. and M. What was the?
J. and M. Zepula, Z. E. P. A. H. U. A. Sorry, I probably butchered that.
Okay.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the two home-based businesses, J. and M. Zepula Welding and Rims, right? What was the other one?
Rhythm and Mind.
Rhythm and Minds Music, as presented by Gabby, and they are to follow all home-based business rules and regulations that have been presented to them.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
This next one is Bayou Barbecue. It's located at twenty-nine oh three West, five hundred North, parcel number four, one nineteen, five. This is in the RA one zone. This is a home-based business where he makes, like, takeaway meals, but sells them at other locations. So, we went by and checked it out. Everything should be good. They have approvals from Tri-County Health, and the Fire Department actually said that they do not regulate these, that the, these are regulated state and federally with the cottage industry regulations. So, the conditions on this one are that they follow home-based business rules and regulations, follow all Fire Department, Tri-County Health, and state and federal cottage industry requirements.
Okay. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the business license for Bayou Barbecue. With the provision they provide, comply with all home-based business rules, fire, and cottage industry regulations.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
The next one is Dopsicle, located at seventy-eight ninety-eight East Brush Creek.
What was, what was that?
Dopsicle. Their last name is Dop, D.O.P.P., and then the last is like Popsicle.
Dopsicle.
Yeah, Dopsicle. Parcel number five, one forty-three, twenty-nine. This is located in the A. One Zone. So, this is a shaved ice truck. They're using the home as a home-based office, and also where they park the trailer. The trailer isn't a commercial trailer. It's on the smaller, it's too small to qualify for a commercial trailer. So, the rules and regulations on this one are that they follow all Tri-County Health and Fire Department regulations, that no customers are at the home. The shaved ice truck is parked at other appropriate locations when in use, and that they follow all home-based business rules and regulations.
All right.
Okay.
I'll make attempt at that name.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Doptical.
Dopsicle.
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 Home-based business, to follow all Tri-County Health Department's rules and regulations, Fire Department, and all home-based business rules, regulations, that has been presented. Does that cover us?
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. One more?
Yep, last one. Hacienda, Hossico, located at twenty-five seventy-one West, five hundred North, parcel number five, one eighteen seventeen. This is in the commercial zone, C. One. They are a Mexican food restaurant where customers will enter, they'll sit down and be served. So, they have approvals from Fire, Health, and Building. And so, the conditions on this one are that they, just that they follow Tri-County Health Department, Fire Department, and Building rules and regulations. This is for a commercial business.
Commercial business?
Yep.
Okay.
Hacienda what?
J. A. C. I. S. C. O.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the business license for Hacienda Justin, for, with the provisions they, it's a commercial business license, and they comply with all Fire Health and business regulations.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. You go see Ellen. Okay. We have a need for a public hearing today for the 2022 budget amendment increase. So, we'll open, go ahead, present.
Did you open it?
I was gonna let him present first.
Okay.
Public hearing, so people can have a comment. Okay.
amendment for the 2022 UNA County Budget, and I'll just run through that for everybody's information. So, first of all, in Fund Ten, the General Fund, the first, GIS, Corrections, Road Department, and Buckskin Hills are all in need of a budget increase to cover the increase in fuel costs. So, what we did, what I did is looked at what they've spent for the first six months of the year, and use that as a guide for the next six months of the year, and increase their budget accordingly. Let's see here. Then, the Children's Justice Center has a six thousand dollar increase due to a grant increase in their contract from the Attorney General's Office that you approved previously. The Economic Development Department needs an increase of forty-four thousand, nine seventy-five in Phenomenicon, and that is to bring the estimated revenue up to the actual revenue that we've collected to date. So, we asked, we estimated thirty thousand in revenue. They're up to seventy-four thousand, nine seventy-five so far. And then, a transfer from the General Fund to the Debt Service Fund of a hundred thousand, and that will provide for the defeasance of the UNA County General Obligation Bonds. Previously, you provided a budget adjustment for that, but we don't know the exact number right now, and so this hundred thousand is just basically a cushion. So, we have enough in there right now for the estimate, but in case it goes over, you'll have enough to do that if you desire. The revenue is coming from the general property taxes of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred, Attorney General's Office of six thousand, Phenomenicon of forty-four thousand, nine seventy-five, and the general property tax of a hundred thousand. Moving on to the Municipal Services Fund, they're also in need of an adjustment for fuel of forty-two, forty-two hundred dollars. The library needs an increase for an ARPA grant that they received of twelve thousand dollars. Travel and tourism is in need of increase in their budget for the Balloon Fest, twenty-five thousand, and increase in promotions of fifty-three thousand, nine fifteen, increase in outlaw ATV jamboree of twenty-seven fifty-nine, increase in the Rock Rally of ten thousand, three twenty-five. So, on the Rock Rally and the ATV, and twenty-three thousand, nine fifteen of the promotions comes from monies that have been collected from the gravel bike race, the Allah Trail, and the Rock Rally. So, that just brings the revenue and expense up to what we've already collected. On the other two, it's gonna, we're gonna increase the budgeted transit room tax by fifty-five thousand dollars to cover twenty-five thousand of the Balloon Fest and thirty thousand of the promotion increase. The Drug Court has requested an increase in their education and training budget of seventeen ninety, and they want that to come from fund balance because they're spending donations that were given to them in prior years. And then, Fund Thirty, Debt Service Fund, so the principal payment will be increased by five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars. That source of that money will be a hundred thousand dollar rev, a hundred thousand dollar transfer from the General Fund, and four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred from fund balance. As I said previously, the hundred thousand coming in from General Fund is just a cushion. I don't anticipate it to be needed at this point, but in case it's needed when the transaction's completed, if it's completed. That's the, that's the total, and the summary of the adjustment.
Okay. You guys have any, any questions before we open up the hearing? Seeing, seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing for the 2022 budget amendment increase.
Go back to your first page there, Mark.
Sure.
Go to your revenues, please. You've got general property taxes. This to make up, this is gonna use part of the five hundred thousand that Brad put back on?
That is correct.
That we were able to keep, okay?
Yeah.
So, wanted to make a note that there's another hundred thousand going to debt service. Now, go on up, please, to your debt service one. You're showing four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars in there. It's fund balance to be spent?
Yes.
There's not that much money in there. You've already budgeted that and spent it. So, with that, Commissioners, that's my only comment on that one. And also, as the Finance Director for UNA County per code, I'm the Budget Officer.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Can I, can I address that question? Do you want me to do it in public hearing or out of the public hearing?
What's that?
What question?
About the four hundred and eighty thousand of fund balance.
Let's do it in the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, so, Fund Thirty is the Debt Service Fund, and we can look at cash, or we can look at fund balance. So, let's start with cash. So, the cash balance at twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one was six hundred and ninety-six thousand, fifty-nine dollars. To date, and I'm just taking that number from, from the county's records, and then also from the county's records of property taxes that we've received in 2022. We've had receipts of eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, seventeen thousand, seventy-eight thousand, and nineteen hundred dollars. We've transferred in, or budgeted to be transferred in, I'm not sure they've been done yet, but they're budgeted, seven million, one hundred thousand from the General Fund, eleven million, eight fifty from Capital Projects, and six million, six hundred thousand from the MBA Fund. Payments that we've used that cash for so far this year, we've paid four hundred and seventy-three thousand, sixty dollars in interest, and four hundred dollars in fees, scheduled in the budget to be paid this year, that hasn't been paid yet, but will be paid, eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the Anadarko refund, and twenty-five thousand dollars in anticipated fees to do the defeasance, and a deposit to escrow of twenty-six million, six fifty, oh thirty-four. That number, twenty-six million, six fifty, oh thirty-four, is a hundred thousand dollars higher than we anticipate right now, so that's where that cushion's at. So, that shows you cash, available cash is the twenty-seven one sixty-seven, two ninety-seven. The uses of that cash is, are twenty-seven one sixty-six, six ninety-five. So, we actually, after all this, will have six hundred dollars left in that, before any more receipts come in, which there'll be more receipts coming in. Fund, now let's look at fund balance. The fund balance at twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one was one million, four sixty-one, oh thirty-four. Revenue to date, hundred fifty-six thousand, two sixty-two. The reason that's different than the revenue in the, in the cash side is because there was a receivable recorded, that doesn't show up as cash in the fund balance calculation. Expenditures of four hundred and seventy-three, transfers in, seven one, six six, eleven, eight fifty, projected amount to defease at twenty-six, six fifty, twenty-five thousand in fees, eighteen thousand, two hundred to Anadarko, leaving a balance of six hundred and one dollars. So, I'm just using the numbers that come off the county's books, and there's, there is fund balance for what I'm proposing.
Just one more comment, Commissioner?
Yep.
On there, your current revenues there, you're showing, I'm sure, fee and loom monies, that when you took the tax rate away for this year, that money will be reallocated, and will go back to the, all the other entities, because when you don't collect the property taxes, you don't get your share of the fee and loom monies that'll be coming in. So, that'll be reflected back, and will be refunded back to the tax trust to be reallocated back to all the other taxing entities in the county. And I'm not gonna get in argument on his monies, but he's, he's not correct, in my opinion.
How much do you feel like we're short, Mike?
After you, when you originally did that, two months ago, you used, you were projecting use one million, forty-five thousand dollars. That'll leave ninety-eight thousand dollars in there, in Fund Thirty, because that's all I'm dealing with right there is Fund Thirty. So, right there, your fee and loom monies right there, that's seventy thousand, whatever, that will have to be refunded back to the tax, to the Treasurer's Office, because you will not get that. We won't get that money, because you only get the fee and loom based on the, the tax, and it's allocated as a percentage of what the total taxes are. So, the school district and the other entities will get more, will get that, but that will probably, that will go away for this year.
So, we could be potentially, you're saying, seventy thousand short?
At least that. Correct.
Because that's what we have here, seventy thousand for fee and loom.
That is correct.
Okay, so there's a hundred thousand dollar cushion built in. I don't know that I agree with that, because this is, this is just what's coming in from prior years. This is not necessarily all that's coming in this year. Okay.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and move on to Resolution zero eight, zero one, two zero, two two, R. One, the 2022 budget amendment and increase.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to make a motion that we approve the Resolution zero eight, zero one, two zero, two two, R. One, 2022 budgetment, budget amendment and increase.
Okay. I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda is Resolution number zero eight, zero one, twenty twenty-two, R. Two. Who's taking that one?
I'm here for fun, I guess. So, my name's Japheth McGee.
There you go.
Yeah. My name's Japheth McGee with Zion's Public Finance. We are municipal advisors on municipal debt issuances. So, we give public, public entities advice on how you and when to issue debt in, and how to, in this case, defees debt, and the process for doing that. And so, this here is a resolution to consider the, the execution of an escrow agreement. So, this will authorize the county to take all necessary actions to defees the county's Series 2015 General Obligation Bonds. How that will work is, those bonds are not yet callable, or prepayable. Those aren't prepayable for a few more years, and so what this will do is it will set up an escrow. The escrow will have enough money in it in order to pay off the bonds as they hit their payment dates over the next several years, prior to the, the call period. And then, once that call date hits, it'll pay off all bonds that are prepayable at that point, which will be the rest of the bonds. Now, what this legally does is it allows the county to remove this debt from their books, even while it's still technically outstanding. Bondholders are being made, have payments made to them, but it will be, for all intents and purposes, considered legally defeased and no longer the obligation of the county. How you accomplish that is you, is you purchase securities that are specially-designed treasury securities called state and local government securities. And these have very, very specific returns on them. The IRS says you can't earn a specific amount, above a specific amount, in an escrow, because these are tax, tax-exempt liabilities, your bonds are. And so, what they do is they issue these securities so that you can put them into an escrow, and make sure that at each period that you have a payment due, the money will be there in order to make that payment. And that way, you can be assured that, yeah, the debt is sufficient, or the, the escrow's sufficient to make this. There will be a professional who will actually verify, they're called an escrow verification agent, they will verify that the escrow is sufficient to meet all of the debt payments along the way, and Zion's will work with them to, to get that. So, working with bond counsel to also get the escrow agreement all set up so that it is an economic and legal defeasance under IRS regulations. So, happy to answer any questions on the resolution, but that's, that's my, my purpose here.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
What's that?
Go ahead.
That will meet our obligations, Sheriff Labrum, to go ahead and get the federal, I think that's all gonna meet our, get the federal prisoners?
Yeah.
You think it's?
I'd have to ask, but I, I would assume so. Yeah, so, so one of the purposes, one of the purposes of having, of accomplishing a defeasance is, because you have issued tax-exempt securities to build the, the jail facility, you can't then have private payment in order to make those payments on the debt. And there are some complicated IRS definitions of that, but essentially, the federal government considers itself a private entity, so any payments from the federal government towards inmates would basically endanger the tax-exempt nature of the bonds. And so, in order to take federal prisoners, you would have to defease, defease the bonds.
We, we hired, we talked with some legal counsel on that during our meeting, and it was, it, it makes it so we can. And this is not, once this money's in, it cannot be recalled later on.
It's an irrevocable, it's an irrevocable escrow. The slugs themselves are not remarketable securities. That's kind of the whole point, is they're not remarketable. You purchase them, they don't have a secondary market, and at the date, that, the, the ability not to remarket them makes it so that their price levels don't fluctuate, so that you could lose money or, or gain money by reselling them in the secondary market. And that's what makes them verifiable in that escrow.
Okay.
Now, you don't have to use slug, slug, the slug window's not always open. This federal government's not always issuing slug securities. And if that closes, this escrow agreement does allow you to purchase other securities that are usually federal government securities, but those would be a little bit more remarketable. But again, But again, um, the escrow agreement itself says that in order to do that, you'd have to, in order to sell securities that are in the escrow, you'd have to have that escrow verification agent come back in and say, yes, these, these securities are sufficient to make all of the debt payments. And again, that protects you from IRS regulations regarding the tax exempt nature of the bonds and, and prevents those from reverting to taxable.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions, John? Brad? Bill? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Entertaining the motion.
Can you make some?
What's that?
Will you take comment? Will you take comment?
From you?
I'd like to make a comment at this time, if I could.
Sure.
Thank you. I do have, uh, this is something I'd like to share with you as well.
Wendy Long, U N A County Treasurer. I just have a few comments that I would like to make the commission aware of, as well as the public aware of, um, before this motion is passed. In a meeting that we held on May 12th with Zion's Bank, Japheth McGee was there, McGee was there with the commission. After that meeting, and it was presented to us, Commissioner Stringer, I believe that you even made the comment in the meeting that this probably wasn't going to happen. Um, I recall that statement after the meeting.
What wasn't going to?
Because of the reasons that I'm going to state here. And these are, are the reasons that also were brought up by Zion's Bank. A couple of thoughts that I've had while thinking about this. We're already receiving centrally assessed appeals at this time. We're already receiving lawsuits that are going to have to be paid back. And I think in the last meeting, when we discussed this, I cautioned you about the centrally assessed appeals as well, um, when you were anticipating lowering the tax rate. These refunds to centrally assessed appeals will be used, or the refunds will, um, use the cash reserves. And so I'm very concerned, as the treasurer of U N A County and also the, the investment officer for the county, that if we take this $26 million of our cash reserves, I think it will put the county in a very, um, a, a very vulnerable position. The GO bond right now is at 2.66% interest. These bonds, as was mentioned earlier, are not even callable till 2026. So paying off this bond would, would deplete much of the county reserves, $26 million of our county reserves. This isn't fiscally responsible, in my opinion. Cash is key. These reserves have been set aside for many years from, uh, previous commissions for future needs. If you spend these reserves and a need arises, you do not have the money to pay for it. If you try to borrow the money again, you will pay a much higher interest rate than we are presently paying, and I'm going to demonstrate that in the next, um, on the next page that I've handed out to you. I just don't think this is wise in this economy, when the rate of inflation is around 10%, and it will also lower our bond rating. So there, it, it's not as simple as, let's just go up to the local bank and pay off our car loan. And I really want the public and you commissioners to, to realize that and to understand that. You've already lowered the tax rate for the fourth year in a row, so our revenues are going to be less. We won't have reserves in our accounts. Depleting our reserves on top of that will put us in a very vulnerable financial position. This is not doing the taxpayers any favors by raising and lowering taxes year to year. Japheth McGee with Zion's Bank explained the cash defeesence and the process for this. I guess I don't understand why you would want to, well, I do, I do understand it from the perspective of the federal inmates at the jail, but basically, it's just taking our own money and giving it to Zion's Bank and tying it up, because it's not going to get paid off for four years anyway. But that won't be available to us for our use. So I'd like to refer to the next page, the cash defeesence of county public safety bonds. I have taken these figures off of the spreadsheets that were sent to us and emailed to us by Zion's Bank. So the amount that we, and I do have copies in the back of the room afterward, if anybody would like a copy. The deposit to the escrow, we will have to, from, from the tables that was sent to us, we will deposit to escrow $26,527,034.81. The cost of the issuance, just to do this, is $25,000. So that brings us to a total of $26,552,034.81 is the amount of money we're going to have to come up with to, to make this possible. The principal balance on this bond is $25,615,000. That leaves a difference of $937,034.81. That's what we're going to pay to do this, $937,034.81. There is anticipated interest that would, we would pay on that escrow account of $2,239,515.29. If you subtract the cost of the defeesence, which the $937,034.81, it leaves you a balance of $3,176,550. Subtract the cost of the issuance, and the total amount of the interest that we would pay if we were to retain these bonds, continue the course, stay the course, continue what we're doing, the interest cost to 2026 would be $3,151,550. I have contacted, um, as the investment officer for the county, if I, if I were to put the amount of money that you are anticipating to pay off these bonds, if I were to put that into a high interest, high yielding investment account, which I have, I have done so with other monies, um, in the next four years over to 2026, um, I, the, those bonds, or, excuse me, that interest that it would earn on a high interest or an investment account would be 4%. Now, that 4% was a week ago. On Thursday, the feds raised the interest rate three quarters of a percent. So the amount of interest that we stand to be able to gain on an account like that would actually be higher than the figures that I have given you. The interest that I could earn on that would be $4,228,900. So the difference is $1,077,350. That we would earn that much more interest than what we would pay, that makes sense to me, that, that you would not, it would not be wise financially to pay off something when you can earn more interest on that, on those same monies. This would more than offset the interest costs on the outstanding debt, while at the same time, it would maintain the cash reserves for the county. So we would not be tying up and jeopardizing those monies for the county. Now, I know that you have mentioned, um, the, the federal inmates at the jail. I have not seen any figures yet as to how many inmates would, would we anticipate, at what rate would that come in, and what would the expense be for additional employees at the jail to house that many more inmates? So without that information, I'm just going off of the information that I was given, the numbers that I have been given by Zion's Bank, and this is, these are the numbers that I've come up with. And I have taken these numbers as fact, and, um, again, as the county treasurer, as the investment officer for the county, I would strongly recommend that you not pay off this GO bond debt until 2026. There, thereby, we would be saving basically $2,000,000, because we've got the cost of the defeesence plus, um, the amount of money that we could earn if that money were invested. So with those two, it's about a $2 million figure. So we're looking at $2 million to be able to do this, so that we can say we're out of debt. To me, it's not worth it. Thank you, commissioners.
One question, Wendy. Do you mind? How much money do we have left over in our savings when, if we took this money out and did this?
That would be a question for Mr. Wilkins, for Mike Wilkins. He's the one that retains those numbers.
Can you answer that, Mike? Or do you know that offhand?
I think he will. I think he's prepared to answer some questions in, after I'm through. Do you have any other questions for me?
Uh, just your opinion, what do you think we need to use this, in case we're going to need money in the future, Wendy? What, what, what do you think we may need in the next four years to save this money to spend?
What, what do I think that we would need?
Anticipated need for it.
Um, I think that's an undetermined figure. I think that's an undetermined thing. We don't know what the county is going to need in the next four years. That's why I feel it's imperative that we keep our cash on hand. If we're to go, if we have a need arise, if we need a new roof on the library or on the public safety complex, whatever that need might be, we don't have the cash on hand to pay for it. So if we go out and borrow that money, we are going to pay way higher than 2.66% interest. If we go out and borrow more monies to pay for the county's debt, bills, or whatever future needs the county might have.
Okay.
So in, in my opinion, this is just not a wise financial decision.
Have we been using cash savings to pay for these air conditioning units and roofs that we've been doing? Is that?
Again, I would defer that to Mike Wilkins for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know what the, uh, what is the, the bond rate, the tax rate that the taxpayers taxed each year on this, on the jail?
Do you have that figure? I don't have that figure with me today.
Commissioner?
So the taxpayers were, are assessed $2.4 million every year to service this debt?
2.4?
2.4 million every year until, I think, 2034, 2035.
And if you defees the debt, then the taxpayer's not hit that 2.4?
That 2.4 million goes away, and it's all savings, about $5 to $6 million to the taxpayers.
Okay.
Now, you said that, uh, say it again, $5 to $6 million to the taxpayer per year? Or what?
No, over, over the life of the bond, to about 2035.
Okay.
Because if you don't pay it off, you'll end up paying 31 million, five, 31 million, 31.6 million in interest and principal versus 26.5 if you defees it.
Do you know what we have in savings at this time? If we pay this off, what would be left?
Uh, I don't have a current report. The treasurer should have those numbers.
Did you have those numbers, Mike?
Mike Wilkins, U N A County Clerk Auditor. Commissioners, if this was 2026, when these were actually callable, I'd be 100% behind you, supporting this action all the way through. But these are non-callable bonds. I think Japheth already described what a non-callable bond is. Someone has loaned you money, and you don't get to pay them off until a certain time. On May 12th, we met with Zion's Public Finance, Wendy, myself, and you, you gentlemen, and they basically said, this isn't the time to be doing this. With cost of inflation going, we're on the brink of a recession, and with the interest way it is going right now, we will be paying a million dollars more than what the outstanding debt is to pay this off, to do this right now. June, you passed a one point, you proposed a $1.8 million tax reduction. Thank you, Brad, for lowering that down to 1.3 million, because that's going to affect our cash for here out. So I went back and did a hypothetical projection back three years ago. I did a cash flow that said, I pulled the actual cash balance in the bank on the general fund only, because that's the money that is actually available to do pretty much whatever you guys want to do with, from repairing a roof, an air conditioning unit goes out, buckskin heels, whatever it is that we, that the commission desires to do. I went back to January 2020, we had $9.5 million in there. Had we did the 1.3 million tax reduction and the $7 million, which now is 7.1 million after today's budget increase, by May, you would have been doing tax anticipation. Our cash balance in the general fund would have been $777,000 negative in the hole. We'd had to borrow money from May through November, because we don't get those property tax dollars until December. That's when the monies come in. We have to operate on that money all year long until the next monies come in. We have sales tax money come in, but I've taken into consideration, that is, have that in there. Back in 2020, we averaged $3.1 million a month in expenses. In 2021, I did the same thing. We got our influx of money. In, in December, we went up to a $10 million balance. By May, again, if we'd took that 1.3 million out, that has already been passed, and this $7 million that is proposed, if this goes through, we'd be borrowing money again from May all the way through. Now, there was a big influx of money that came in, in August of 2021, the ARPA money. That money is one-time money, and it's already been transferred to a separate fund. That money now, it can't, you can't use that money to pay your day-to-day bills with. And that's where I'm at, is, do we have the money in the bank to make the payroll, to pay the bills? So with that, Commissioner Horix, you'll be here next year. These other two guys won't be here. They don't care what kind of cash money you have in the bank, but you will be going through tax anticipation notes for the general fund. Because you can't steal from these other funds, that's restricted monies. You can't steal from them or borrow from them to pay these off, or to keep your cash flow going. We keep talking about the rainy day fund. Yes, county has a rainy day fund, $8.1 million. Let me tell you what it takes to get to that money. Now, we can pull the interest off, every year, we can pull the interest off, whatever it makes. But in order to draw that money, the legislative body of the county has established that there need for it, determines that it is necessary, this is 173654 for you, John, if you need that one, determines that it is necessary, purpose of the county to use any portion of the principal fund, the county's legislative body shall submit the proposition to the electorate of that county in a special election, called and held for that manner, saying how much money you want to take out of it. Now, you can only hold them special elections at a certain time every year, or every other year. So it's not something, oh, we need that money now to pay the bills, we can't just go out and take it. We're going to wait until November at the earliest, and actually, at this time, you would, you would be too late to even get something like that on the, on the ballot. So continuing with that, we know right now that we have approximately $736,000 to $1 million in judgments and, uh, tax refunds that'll have to be paid. The one judgment, the paper's already advertised or spoke about it, radio spoke about it, we know it's going to be $450,000 plus an unknown amount. Mr. Caldwell budgeted $6.6 million to move from the municipal building authority. There's only $6.4 million available. Because you can't steal from those sinking funds. Those sinking funds are set up for those bonds. You can't take that money. It's predicted everywhere you read that the United States is headed into a recession. Federal Reserve last week just raised interest rates again, 75 bonus points. You can say you're paying off debt, and that's, and I'm, I agree paying off debt is the thing to do, but there's a time to do it, and there's a time not to do it. This is not the time to do it with the additional costs. And also, we keep talking about federal inmates. Let's get a contract with them. Let's get a contract with them, saying how much they're going to pay us and how many inmates they're going to bring, so we know what the cost is. so we know what the cost is. The last two years, in 2021 and 2022 budgets, you guys have approved a revenue source of $500,000 from Salt Lake County inmates. We haven't had Salt Lake County inmates since 2020. Is that correct, Sheriff? We haven't had any inmates since then, but we budgeted half a million dollars. So we've had to make that up out of the fund balance to do that. You are financially crippling the next commission, forcing them to have to go through an immediate tax increase, which will take them 24 months to do. Because as soon as you could do it, first of all, you wouldn't do it this October because you gentlemen are here and you're not going to do it. So the first, earliest they could do it is 2023. We wouldn't even receive those monies until November, December of 2024. I want you to know, as the duly elected County Clerk Auditor for U N A County, I do not support the defeasance of these bonds at this time. Now, your question as far as the money, hopefully I've answered that. By doing that, you'll be down right now to $1.4 million in the general fund. Because you've got to take into consideration, you're not going to get that $1.3 million that has already been a tax reduction that you gave the taxpayers. You won't get that money this November and December. We already going to have to eat the $2.4 million payment because we did not put that on the voted on the tax notice. So we're going to have to come up with $2.4 million out of capital projects or general fund just to make this year's payment. Those are my comments, Commissioners. Please do not do this.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Bill, do you have any questions? Okay. Well, I'll put it up for a motion. Looking for a motion for resolution 08012022R2. What's up? No, I'm not taking comment, just from elected officials. You can do it in the public comment if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 808012022R2 to effectively defees the GO bond U N A County currently has.
Okay. I have a motion.
Can I make a comment?
You can.
You know, I'd like to take a little bit of, postpone this a week to take a little bit more time with this. We could do, is there a problem with that?
No, I don't think, I don't think it hurts anything.
I would, I would like to entertain that, you know, that we kind of postpone this a week and dig through this and go over all the figures with Mark and everything and just couple check that with the inmates, what we think. I know they've promised us to send out federal inmates and income off of that, and so that's all right.
So is it, you're not going to second the motion?
Well, I'd second it so we can bring it to a vote if that's what we need to do, but I'm just made a comment. I'll second the motion.
It's up to you if you, you have, so we do have a motion and a second?
Listen, I'd like to wait a week, so I'm not going to second it at this time. I'd like to wait a week to work on it.
Motion fails due to not having a second. So we'll go on. Agreement between U E L S LLC and U N A County to perform surveying, drafting, and engineering services for Western Park Ice Stream and Amphitheater Projects.
Commissioners, I can tee this one up, and we do have Chris here from U E L S. If there are any specific questions about the project itself, I would direct any questions to him. This scope of work is to take care of site features and utility surveys, site topographical survey, meeting with utility companies and Western Park personnel to locate all utilities within the project area and draft base mapping of existing facility to prepare for civil design efforts. The compensation summary is included. I emailed all this to you last week for your individual review. These personnel rates per hour were also included, I think, in the original bid, but they're also included here just for, for reference. So you can take a look at that. So it's based off of an hourly rate, so there isn't a set amount for this contract, but it is. I would, I would define this as a secondary contract to the contract that was already awarded to U E L S, but they need one here for the survey work.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agreement between U E L S LLC and U N A County to perform surveying, drafting, and engineering services for the Western Park Ice Stream Edition and Amphitheater Project.
Okay.
I just have a question. Where's this money coming from?
ARPA.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. We have a need for a public hearing today on a vacation of some certain U N A County road right-ofways. Gabby, are you in charge of this one?
Yes, I'll present it.
I'll let you present first and then we'll open the public hearing.
Okay, Gabby Hawks Blackburn with Community Development. Again, hopefully this works. So we can just go in order on the agenda if that works for you because we actually have three applications. So the first two are Class D county roads. This first one, you can kind of see, this is Main Street. We have State 121, and the road that we're looking at is highlighted in blue up here, comes off of Deep Creek Road. Here you can see it zoomed up a little bit. So we had an application to vacate this portion by the property owner. He said that it runs like 30 feet from his house and that no one uses it, that there's better roads elsewhere. When the road vacation committee met, we looked at the rest of this road and saw that it wasn't really aligned with where people were using anyway, and no one seemed to be using it. So we noticed it for the entire road and didn't get anything back on, from the public on whether they wanted it or didn't want it until Friday. This property owner here, we can see it down here, Wayne, Young Wayne Successor Trust is this property. They stated that they do not want the portion on their property to be vacated. So with that knowledge, it connects into the road. They actually can't count right now, use this road. This is a private road. So this D road connects back up to the road through this Johnson, Donald G., and Joyce L. trustees and through Deep Creek Haven LLC, which is the section that they're trying to vacate. So hopefully that was clear as mud, what's going on here.
I guess, Gabby, there's, I've got, there's the public hearing.
Yeah.
Is this on Roads 55118, 55119, 55121?
Yep.
Okay.
So, and the way that works is 55118 is from the road here down to where it turns up. 55119 is from the up part to the property line, and 55121 is from the property line to the road again. So with this public hearing, you can, I guess with this process, you can just vacate this section that the applicant asked for. You don't have to do the entire road. Or you can do this entire road, or you can do the whole thing. Lots of options here.
The 118, so that one doesn't access any public ground?
Nope, none of this is public. Yeah, this is all private.
The other one still have access in from the, coming in, I want to say maybe north there.
Yep.
So they'd still have their access and...
Who is the center, the center one section, the 119? Who owns that?
That is the Wayne, Young Wayne Successor Trust. So we've been working with the Atherton's. They've been representing them or that's them. I'm not quite sure. But they stated they would not like it removed off of that section.
But they don't have any problem with this access being removed?
Right, yeah. They don't have a problem with the Deep Creek Haven LLC portion or, we didn't really talk to them about the L and D Youngs LLC portion. However, strictly speaking, if you just keep their piece and you vacate this piece, you'll remove the access.
You know, that L and D Young LLC, they show they got a road coming through their property, past their buildings right up to that road. Is that correct?
This section right here?
Yes.
It's, the road is hard to see. It runs right here.
Yeah. So before we vacate that road, do you think we need to talk to the L and D Youngs?
Yeah, they were notified.
But they never responded?
Yeah, they didn't have any sort of comment.
Tried calling them, just...
I didn't try calling, just through letters.
So the 118 is owned by the Deep Creek Haven LLC?
And L and D, so it's not owned by them. It's a Class D road.
Okay.
But it's on property owned by Deep Creek Haven LLC and L and D Youngs LLC. But the way that it was noticed and written up in the ordinance is you can just vacate the piece that Deep Creek Haven LLC owns.
Just the piece on their property?
Mm-hmm.
It's just the access of, you know, if the L and D is using it. I'd like to talk to them.
I would sure like to visit with the Youngs about that, you know, if that's, I would, I kind of... You know, just, I know you've sent letters and stuff, but I don't know how hard it is to find the phone number on them and chase that down to, apparently they probably don't show any interest, but I'd still, Gabby, if you went...
Commissioners, can I, can I jump in real quick? So the statute outlines the specific process that we're supposed to follow to vacate a road. And so there's mailing requirements, and then there's public hearing requirements and everything else. I would really advise not to break from that process because then we're introducing a new process on the next road vacation. We, we send these letters on the known address that they provide to the county. It's the same address that their tax notices go out on the official. Now, there may be other, you know, there's other addresses that tax notices also be, that are also used, but we utilize that main address that's provided to the county for all official communications. So I would, I would just recommend that we don't break from that process and require community development to do something else. Because otherwise, the next road vacation request that comes in, then are we saying, do we have to have direct communication and then our hands are tied because some property owners are in California, sometimes they're older individuals that aren't really responsive by phone, or there's, you know, 15 different nieces and nephews that may have interest, and we just send it to the, we send it to the listed property owners. And that's the process we follow. I think the intent is good. I'm not trying to say that your, your intention isn't well put. I just advise you not to introduce another process.
And I don't see any real problem, and we've met the criteria. You guys have done your work, whatever it is, mailings, however that's being done. I, I think we've met all the criterias.
Yeah, and right now, oh, sorry, I turned my mic off. Right now, it's not up for, this is just the introduction, and then we'll have a public hearing and see if there's anybody here that would like to make comments on it. And then I think the commission can deliberate on how you feel and introduce a motion.
Okay. You want to go to the next one, Gabby?
Yep. So the next one is another Class D road. You can see Main Street down here. So it's over here highlighted in blue. So we're actually only looking at the section of this road from his property line, highlighted in blue, to his house. So this road just dead ends into their house. It's a Class D road. He said no one uses it, but they just want to tie up loose ends. And that's pretty much all I have on this one. He, he accesses from the north through the rest of his property.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on this one?
I don't.
Okay, and then the last one is unique. So this is a Class B county road. It's actually just the turnaround section. So this Mountain Dell Drive is a recorded subdivision, so it has slightly different notice requirements. And we noticed it in the paper for this meeting, but when it came to noticing on the website and noticing in person, you actually have to put up a sign there. Those were not done correctly, and so to keep, to make those correct, we had to move it to the next date. So we're bringing it up here just in case anyone from, saw it in the newspaper and showed up here. But it'll actually be next week when we can really have the public hearing for that because that's when all the notices were correct.
Okay.
So that's all I have on that one, too. And that's all of them.
Okay. Any questions from the Commissioner, John, on these? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing for the request to vacate certain U N A County roads and right-ofways. Any from, anyone from the public here that would like to have a comment? Come up to the mic. State your name, if you would, please.
Vance Merrill. I'm the second application to vacate a road there. Old county road that comes off in hasn't been used in years and years. Been fenced for a long time. But with the potential of a sand mine coming to the east of me, it's something that I'd like to get closed up. I've heard horror stories of problems other places with the oil field and stuff, and so I'd like to get it shut down for that reason.
And that's the one that ends at your house?
Yes.
Why don't you want those big trucks turning around in your house?
Rather not.
Okay.
I think there'll be plenty of them on the Island Park Road, so...
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, we'll close the public hearing. And now, Gabby, you're going to have to walk us through these ordinances.
Okay.
So we can talk about each one separate.
So we got with the county attorney's office, so maybe John might be a better contact, but I can pull up the ordinances and we can look at them if that's how you want to...
Yeah, I mean, I'll, so I'll just state this and then defer to Gabby on, on talking about the actual roads. My preference is that whenever we have a request to vacate a, a public road, that we have a separate ordinance for each road. It helps with the legislative history if we need to search it. If the commission wants to split different roads and make a different decision, then we have an ordinance that gets all muddied. And so my preference is that we do it, each road by separate ordinance. So that's why you see, I don't know if you remember that great meeting when Cheryl Meyer was in here and we had about 10 different ordinances, but each road was able to stand or fall on its own based off of a commission decision. So that's why I advise that we have it listed this way on the agenda. So I would, I would just say, Gabby, let's pull up each one just in order, and then the commission can decide what it wants to do with each war, each road or a portion of a road or however they want to go.
Great. So this is the ordinance for the Class D road 55118. That is the one that we very first talked about, right here. That is the one that we very first talked about, right here.
That is the section in the circle.
Yeah, so that is, uh, one-one-eight goes all the way from the road to where it turns up to go north. So if you want to just do a portion of that, you would have to specify that.
But you have went through the Youngs portion, they've been notified, I think we followed all correct procedures to go ahead and do it from one's, the Youngs' property back, is that correct or not?
Yeah, that's correct.
The original request was just for the Deep Creek section?
Right.
Just for the first section, one-one-eight?
No, one-one-eight goes clear to here, but the request was only to here.
Here. Okay.
Is the Youngs', is the Youngs' primary access right there at the curve, straight down into their?
Yeah, I believe so. They didn't state that, but from what we can see and what other, this applicant has said.
So the first applicant, what nu, what number is that, the five-five-one-eight goes all the way, but if you just wanted to prove it through the first?
Right, so you'd say just a portion of fifty-five, one-one-eight.
Gabby, is this, this is just a pitch, pitcher, this isn't the actual map? I mean, you can't look at something here below it?
Yeah, so.
So we do have different options there, and we can do with the ordinance. Um, so there was an option, well, let's see, we'll just stick with this one for now. Um, so there's an option to vacate the whole thing, or you can use this map just to vacate a portion.
Okay.
So whatever map is inserted in the ordinance would be one.
Okay, is, see with that, that road? Is this the Youngs here also? See where, see where it says LND Young, uh, Youngs LLC?
Yeah.
And the road's going, uh, there, that where your arrow is right now, whose ground is that on the other side of it?
It's theirs as well.
That's theirs as well?
They come right up and over, and they're still.
They're still on their property?
Yeah, they're still on their property, so.
Okay. Okay, have any questions? Do you have any questions? Entertain a motion, so you have two, really two choices on this one?
There's.
The full amount or stopping it at the?
Well, the portion.
I guess for clarity, you have, you have three?
Three.
Because it could just be denied, right?
Denied, so if they don't make a motion, then it'll be denied.
All right, I'll make an attempt at it. Uh, ordinance number zero-eight, zero-one, two-zero, two-two.
Oh, one.
Zero-one, an ordinance vacating a portion of a certain Class D road located in Uena County, Utah, in. Do I need to have that, is that the whole road, the description of the whole road, or is that just the description of the partial road? If we read that in there, the T-three-S-R-one-nine-E section?
It's all, all of it's including the section twenty-two, right, the whole, the whole road?
Yeah.
So we probably don't want to read that in, then we'll just go off the portion that's presented by the map, then, is that?
Depending on which one you was to.
Can I see that other one? Sorry.
So, let me turn this one on, so. I, I would suggest that the motion says, you, you have the road, right, how it's listed on the agenda, but then you say only the portion that's contained on, can you pull up the property owner again? Gabby, thank you.
Deep Creek Haven LLC.
Deep Creek Haven LLC.
Okay, leave that up there, okay?
And then that would be, that would be this exhibit then, commissioners, not, not the full length.
Make sure by record we keep that one separate, so.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, you, in, uh, Uena County, Utah, in T-three-S-R-one-nine-E section twenty-two SLM and revisions to the transportation plan map, is that everything you need in there? And it is going to be the only portion that is on the Deep Creek Haven LLC property.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
So we have a motion. Second, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, do you want a copy of that, so? Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
You as clear as mud on that, Becky?
Okay, so this next one is for road, uh, fifty-five nineteen, so it's the next section that goes up north through, um, Young Wayne Successor Trust. And I have another little map like the other one that shows exactly where it goes, it's to this property line of Johnson, Donald G. and Joyce L.
And they asked for it not to be?
Right, they would prefer that it stay.
Okay.
Can I, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Gabby, are they asking for that portion to stay because they need the northern per, portion on the Johnson property? To connect back up to the John, to the Deep Creek Road? Or is this just an independent, they just want the road to stay?
So I think they want the road to stay because in the RFM zone, you can use Class D roads as frontage.
And where would the Class D road then be connecting to the next road?
So that is where it gets into, if you keep this piece, you should probably keep the piece that connects back in.
So is that the, the next ordinance also?
That would be the next one in line, yep. So.
For those two, if we just leave them, if we don't make a motion on them, they'll just stay how they are.
Stay the, the way they are, correct?
I think we'd want to deny them, deny the ordinance, or the.
I think you deny, that, that way the application is, is.
Is that going to be the next two ordinances?
Yes, it'd be the next two, um, sorry, Matt Kizer with Community Development, I did talk to, um, the Atherton's who are representing the Young property. Uh, or, sorry, yeah, the Wayne Young property. Um, they wanted to keep it on their property, uh, they also have access, um, to the private road, and that's where most people are coming in and getting onto this other road, but, uh, they have rights to use that road because they're part of that homeowner association.
Oh.
Um, they access it mainly through that private road, um, but for public access, I think you'd want to keep the road to the north as well. And we never heard back from that owner, uh, saying that he wanted, whether he wanted it left on his property or, um, vacated.
And for clarity, is that Donald Johnson you're talking about?
Oh, yes, sorry, the Johnson property.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussions?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
The next ordinance.
Well, you're talking about the next two ordinances, aren't you?
I think we can lob.
And you're looking at denying them, so instead of just leaving them go, bring them up and then dispose of them.
I'm just going to entertain a motion, whatever you would like to.
Well, that was the, it sounded like the recommendation, rather than just let them languish. So with that, I would make the motion, um, to deny or to disapprove ordinance, ordinance number eight, one-twenty-twenty-two-oh-two, and eight-one-twenty-twenty-two-oh-three, as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, to deny.
Denied.
Okay, last one.
This next one is, um, the ordinance oh-eight, oh-one, uh, twenty-twenty-two-oh-three, and it's for the last portion from this property line of Johnson, Donald, and Joyce L, um, to the Deep Creek Road.
Yeah, we did that one.
I thought we just did.
Did them both, two and three.
We did the two at once, sorry.
So then the last one is for that road that we'll have to have the public hearing at next week. Oh, no, wait, sorry, it's yours.
Yes, I'm saying the Merrill property.
Yeah, so this is for oh-nine, oh-three, oh-two-B, which is this one.
Okay.
Now, what'd you say that number was again?
Um.
Ordinance number?
Oh, the ordinance number?
Eight-one-twenty-twenty-two-oh-four.
Oh-four, yeah.
All right.
Okay, any comments, any discussion? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we, uh, approve the ordinance number eight, zero-eight, zero-one, two-zero, two-two-oh-four, and ordinance vacating a portion of a certain Class D road located in Uena County, Utah, in T-four-S-R-two-three-E section seven SLM and revisions to the transportation plan map.
Okay, can I ask a question before you entertain a second?
Yes.
Okay, so for clarity, and my brain may be a little slow on a Monday morning after a long weekend, is this the one that we needed to get on to the website?
No.
So which one is that on the agenda?
We don't have the ordinance for that on this agenda at all, that was for, um, for a right-of-way.
Okay, so we just have that as the public hearing portion, okay? I just want to make sure.
Okay.
That we're still left with one action item left hanging for another day?
We, we did, yep.
All right, good, thank you, apologize for that.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Okay, and then, Mr. Chair, just if, if I can, so then on the public hearing portion that Gabby said was going to go to the next week, you have reviewed that statute in more detail than I have with Karina, does that give us the required time that, that we need? Okay, so as long as you all have reviewed that and we're good, then, then I'm happy.
Okay, great.
Okay. Okay, well, thanks, Gabby.
Yeah, thank you, sorry that was confusing.
Okay, then we're tabling policy four-sixty, we're tabling policy four-twenty, opioid litigation Utah subdivision agreement to establish Utah Attorney Fee and Expense Fund.
Okay, Commissioners, I can take that, as you'll see, our outside counsel has sent a one-page, really simple agreement uh, for this, uh, Utah Attorney Fee and Expense Fund. The, the whole purpose for this agreement is to allow a firm named Brown Greer, that's all one word, B-R-O-W-N-G-R-E-E-R-P-L-C, as the administrator to disperse payments to the state of Utah and its subdivisions. Uh, in the tri-county area, we will be somewhere over the next, I think it's eighteen years, uh, we will receive about two-point-one to two-point-two million dollars on just this part of the opioid litigation, which is Johnson and Jensen, uh, those two lawsuits, uh, which we've already talked about in prior meetings. So this is really just one step in the process to make sure that those funds can be dispersed. Uh, we had no input on Brown Greer PLC, that was done through the courts and through the massive litigation process that our outside counsel has, has followed. So I, I don't want to say we're just in a, in a position to rubber stamp this, but we kind of are because they have been designated by the courts to be the administrator, and they will take care of the dispersment of the funds.
Okay.
And there's no compensation amount, that's all taken care of in the court documents, they, they take that off the top. Um, so we're not paying them any money, it's all done through the settlement process.
Okay. Sounds good, have any questions?
Well, but not towards that at all, so maybe we'll wait till after that, well, afterwards, I'd like to visit with you after the meeting.
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely, do you have any questions, Commissioner, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the opioid litigation Utah subdivision agreement to establish Utah Attorney Fee and Expense Fund as presented. And I don't, we don't have numbers, so it's more as an as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Next item is an agreement with Legislative Solutions for Lobbying and Government Relations. John, did you have a chance to read over that?
I've reviewed it, nothing of concern.
Okay.
I don't know who you were going to have present it, I reviewed it.
I can talk about it, we were con, we've been looking at, uh, we had Sage, was it Sage?
Yeah.
We had, we had Sage hired as a lobbyist, um, for legislation and for other items we need through the state. We went away from that contract in about, what was it, four months ago? But we terminated that. And we have been, uh, looking for a, a different lobbyist, we had a couple presentations, um, this particular one is accompanied by, let's see, it's ran by Kerry Gibson. He came out and did a, uh, presentation to the commission, and it includes Lincoln Shears?
Shirts.
Shirts, and his lobbyist firm. Um, it, we have the, on, on the contract, we have the option of one or two years, depending on what you, if you want to look at doing something like that. And it's all based upon funds, uh, John, how do you state that, it's based upon? What's that?
I'm, I'm just pulling it up, I'm taking a look at it.
Okay.
So right now on fees, it's a retainer of six thousand monthly will be paid to the consultant as agreed upon by each party. The amount will be billed at the end of each month of the year, payment is due upon receipt of invoices, and the expenses incurred by consultant will have prior approval by the client. And then the term right now is left blank.
Can you, can you read the section on how it involves Lincoln Cheers? The group?
Like on the scope of work?
Yes.
Okay, so the scope of work on consultants, that's Legislative Solutions and Lincoln Hill Partners, shall perform the following services as requested by Uena County, provide technical and political resources and strategy on the issues related to Uena County to include but not limited to the following, transportation and infrastructure, water development and, and infrastructure, economic development, redevelopment, housing planning and zoning regulation, homelessness, general municipal revenue and authority. The consultant will work with the client throughout the year and will regularly communicate and meet with the county to strategically plan and promote the interests of the county, work with legislative leadership, the governor's office, state agencies, Uena County and the related departments and regulators on matters related to Uena County and their interest to develop regionally significant infrastructure in the county. Work to negotiate solutions that are agreeable to the client.
Okay, and is this, is this something we need to put out for bid, or is this a professional services, how is that?
Something like this, I would say would lean more towards professional services. Because it, it really is, if you think of, like, highly technical engineering work, if you think of attorney work, it, it really is the person or the firm that you're going for, uh, rather than just saying, we need to, you know, build a square building and, and send that out to bid.
Okay, I just know.
Now, it can't, can you send it out to bid? Absolutely, and then, and then have a chance to vet different, uh, lobby firms and, and specialists, that's completely appropriate.
Okay. I know we have some, uh, bills coming up, I was contacted by Brenda. You have something coming up in November that you have concerns, need some help, September, that she, she needs some help with on, uh, so. Uh, I'll just leave it at that, that's a.
Dates in there look like me is open?
They, they have it written as a two-year contract, if you do it as a two-year, then we would need to insert the fiscal funding clause. If you keep it as a one-year and then build it into the budget, uh, for that period, then you're, you're fine, because it would be part of the adopted budget uh, for the twelve-month period.
So it was just put on for, I mean, if you want to entertain something, that's great, if not, don't make a motion.
Have any?
Any other questions? Mike, Wendy, do you guys, do you have any need for a lobbyist in, in what you, comes up?
Yes, Commissioner, to answer that question, we do, at times through the legislative session, and I personally know these, both these people. They are excellent. It is professional services, how do you bid out that type of service? Similar to the one we have with.
Alan Freemeyer.
Alan Freemeyer. We get what we pay for, and I think that those two are excellent lobbyists out there. So, but yes, we do have times, and I know Brenda's actually talked. So, but yes, we do have times, and I know Brenda's actually talked to me the same thing that she probably talked to you, that is going to have a major financial effect.
Yeah, it is. It's big. What we've talked, it's a big effect to us.
It's a big effect, cash revenue-wise to the county.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, I would just like to reiterate that as well. I think that this is a wise choice. I also know one of the individuals. Um, I think it's very important that we have someone out there lobbying for our county and being our voice for all of the elected officials. So I would agree that it's a good idea.
Okay.
I know the Sheriff's Association has retained Hughes and Hartley.
That's who you use?
Yeah.
Isn't that?
Greg Hughes.
That's Sage.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's who we have.
Oh, Jeff, Jeff Hartley, huh?
Greg, Greg Hughes and Jeff Hartley and.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what their prices are, but.
Okay.
Brenda McDonald. Yes, I did work with Lincoln on this a couple of years ago. So he would be good to get on this again because he's very aware of the fees and the information there.
Okay. Great.
Mr. Chair, after, after Barbara's.
Yes.
Said something, I would, I would have a comment as well.
Okay.
Me too.
Barbara Simper Assessor, and I would concur with what has been said, and I know Lincoln also. And there are times we do need that assistance, and I think they would be good.
Okay. There's.
Mr. Chair, my, my comment would be, I, I think there is a need. Um, of course, your lobbyists and people speaking on your behalf are only as good as the deliverables that they can bring to the county. Um, I would suggest that we do a one-year contract, see how they're doing. And then if, at that point, if the county wants to enter into a longer-term contract, that's completely okay. Um, but I just get a little nervous because I, I've, I've just seen it too much where people promise the world and we, we get a C can. And it, it's just not worth the money, uh, that, that we've put into it. So I have no doubt that they can do their job. I, I also know both of these individuals. Um, I also knew the individual from the last, uh, group as well. And then I, uh, you know, worked with Alan Freemeyer on a, on a weekly basis. Um, so I, that would be my only comment is if you want to go this route, I would say do one year and see how they deliver. And then we can consider something more.
I was kind of inclined to think the end of March. Using from September first to the end of March, and it's going to give everybody a feel. If they did produce, they did come through, or is that too short a time? I don't know.
I think the lowest time was a year.
Was it a year?
A year.
And I think, Commissioner, are you going because of the legislative session?
Yeah, that's what I just kind of.
I, I think, um, what we would need though is because not only is it through the legislative session, but then it's also keeping the feet on, the, the firearm, I, I got it reversed. Putting their feet to the fire to make sure then they implement whatever was enacted by the legislature. So a year would probably still be appropriate because we need implementation.
Okay.
What if we was to beat on them on the price a little?
I think we, before we. I would agree with that. Uh, let's, uh.
Well, can I make one more comment?
Yes.
The other thing too, and I, I won't say which individual in, in this firm. But sometimes when you get too big, they don't handle conflicts very well. And that's one thing that I would like to see if we have a one-year contract. If we see that loyalty is going to maybe bigger clients, or they have too many clients, and so we're just getting beat out on the vote, then it may not be the, something we want to continue. Uh, it's just something that with these individuals, we've also observed in the past. So I would, I would like to know how they deal with any conflict of, between clients.
Okay. You said you had a comment.
I, yeah, I'm, since I've been with the county, we've been through several of these lobbyists. Alan Freemeyer is the only one we still have. We had another one that, um, we had that I never saw any use in, but it was hard to get rid of them. Um, gosh, what was his name? Bob? Anyway, it's, they, they do have to produce. But the, the hard part is that you don't need them every day of every week of every month. There, there are hot times and there are cool times, and it depends on what the issues of the day are. But you can't just go hire one when something pops up and go, oh, quick, we need a lobbyist. Um, you're better off to have one. But there is a lot of downtime with them, as long as you understand that. Um, the other side of that is what John said. I'm, Alan had for quite a while a, a policy where he only took one county within a state so that there was no conflict of interest. Because we certainly have conflicts with other, um, parts of the state or the organizations within the state. So it's almost as if we want to see their list as part of this. Because we have some, I mean, I have no sense mentioning the names, but there are some counties that it's almost automatic, whatever they do, you don't want to do. So if they're supporting that county, um, I certainly don't want to be paying for that. But as long as we're willing to give it a try, take a look at it, um, and be sure that we're getting some measurables out of it, I think it's worth the, a year trial.
Think they'd negotiate on the price at all?
On a one-year, no. On a two-year, yes. I'm just going to put it up for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we would go ahead with the agreement with legislative solutions for lobbying and government relations for the time period of September first, twenty twenty-two. That work with everybody? If we don't start till September first, they'll.
No, we need a, we need it earlier, so we need to start it now.
Do we?
Yeah, we need to start it, right?
Okay, we can make it from August, uh.
First.
First, twenty twenty-two till August first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, that time, look at it and see about the renewal process. If that's the direction we would like to go at that time.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, so Commissioners, I just sent an email to Karina to make that change.
Okay.
So then Becky, if you want to, that, they'll, they'll get it to you for signature, and then Becky to you after that's done.
Can I kind of make a smart, delicate comment now on this? Paper, do you have your phone? This is the first time all the elected officials of this group has come, agreed upon one deal. Take a picture of it.
They didn't. The sheriff has somebody else.
Oh, yeah.
No, Ryan.
I agree with you, though.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. Let's see, the co-op agreement's tabled. We don't have a use for public, or, uh, closed session, so we'll go to the public comment section. We'll be here for ten minutes, three minutes apiece.
Can I ask a question, though, real quick?
You can.
Since Barbara's here. So Barbara, our outside, it was on a centrally assessed matter, remember? We had that phone call. But she is sick today, so she asked that we table. Are you available next Monday? So when, um, what Monday would you be available? Would you be on the fifteenth? I just don't want to be put on an agenda and then not have. The twenty-second? Okay, how about we do this? Let's not automatically put this on the twenty-second agenda. I'll reach out to outside counsel, make sure that date works, and then I'll get with Becky on the next available date. Okay.
Sounds good. Pam, it's you.
Pam Clinch. And I think you should ask him to negotiate on that price. Won't hurt, right? But I do want to go back to the paying off the bond, the defeasance of that. And I, I think I understood what was said today, and when Mr. McGee was talking about doing that, and then you could put the money in securities. But I, I want to say that I have a concern about, he, he mentioned securities aren't always available. You're at the mercy of the feds doing that. And I did not like that, to put them in escrow and then they don't honor them, and then there's nothing, nothing available. Maybe not honor them, but I just thought, wow, you can't even invest the money. Because, because we all know it's, it's dicey right now with the recession, and this is real about the money. But I just want you to know, I really think it's a bad idea. But I do know it's been the agenda of this commission to pay off debt. That's just been your mantra since Brad's been here. He's, that's been his thing. You've done it, and I think this just is falling into that agenda. And I'm not a debt person either. I've, I've rarely been in debt in my life. I couldn't even buy a car as a over forty person because I didn't have any, um, debt that I had ever had. So I went to get a loan, and I couldn't even do that. So that worries me, that if we're out of debt and as a governing body, a government entity is just different. You have to have debt to get money. I think there's, that's part of it. I don't know a lot about this, but I do see the, what's the word? Well, it just doesn't seem wise to me to spend all your cash money. I haven't been in debt, but I've always had cash reserves to be able to pay for things that come up, for my roof and my whatever. And it just seems like we're paying off all this debt. So you pay off your car and you scrimp and scrape, but then you don't have money to put gas in it. And that's just kind of what this looks like to me, is that we're, we're going to get out of debt, and that's a great idea. But to spend your cash reserves, especially now, it just doesn't seem wise, and it doesn't seem like it's even necessary. Except it is a goal that I felt like you've had to do this, but I think you can put the brakes on this and say, wow, this is one thing. I think this bonding and stuff for this particular loan was different, and there will be some ramifications from that. And I under, I don't even understand it all, but I think I got what, um, the clerk and the treasurer were saying today. So my three minutes, I just want to urge you, please, don't do this at this time. Let's let this year play out and see what happens. Because we've always been solvent. That's been our, our mantra as a county. We have been self-sufficient. We have had money. And I'm really proud of that, that we've had that, um, ability to manage our money. And this is just not necessary. And as far as the, the inmates go, if that's the reasoning that's come, that hasn't always been the reason to pay this off. But I do know that the public safety people are finding it hard to find employees. The new prison is going to open, and they can't even find staff to man it, to have their prisoners there. And so maybe there will be a turning point where they will say, hey, we can't put them in our own prison that we built. Let's send them out to people who want them and let that happen. So, and I don't even know all about that. I just know that is a consideration, that there is a problem. Isn't that right, Sheriff? So, anyway, that's just my two cents, and thank you.
Sonia Norton. My comments, some of them are questions, but, um, I went during the vacation of the roads, and you mentioned calling people or if we contacted them. I don't know if those notices are sent certified. I don't believe they are. So there's no way to tell if they did receive it. This is such a suggestion. I think it would be nice if the planning is able to make a courtesy call. It doesn't have to be in policy, but they could always make a courtesy call to make sure that the people that should be notified can be. I know sometimes that's not possible. There's too many individuals, or there's not enough time, or they have other pressing matters. But that's just a suggestion. Um, also, on the road vacations, that got a little confusing. I didn't know if there's a way you can make it more, a more precise description for the road than just a section township? Because that's a pretty big area for a road. Um, and it was hard to sort those out on there. So if there's any way to do that, that would be greatly appreciated. And also, my third thing was on the lobbyist. I know times have changed. Um, I don't know if UAC has a lobbyist, but the League of Cities and Towns had a lobbyist at the time. And is, do you know if they do? Or is that something they offer?
They still have one.
Do they?
Mm-hmm. But they don't represent your county individually.
Okay. I just know when I was at the city, that if we had concerns and issues, we always went either to the League of Cities and Towns to go to bat for us because they're very powerful at the legislature. And also, I would think UAC would be the same. And if not, we tried to really reach out to our legislators to have them help us as well. But I understand times have changed. That may be necessary now, but that was just something, I didn't know if they still had lobbyists at the league and at UAC. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments, and next motion is to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah, there mine. Hold everything.
Hold everything.
We unadjourn. We unadjourn.
I gave you all this public comment time, and you just sat there.
I am sorry, Leisha, that is my fault. I apologize.
No, it's okay. I just quickly wanted to, um, come up and kind of report on the weekend, so we had a lot going on within my department. Um, to start with, the Buckskin Hills, they had a major motocross event, and their oval track was also going on. And several different departments helped, um, be able to pull that off. So thanks for that, and, um, that, those all turned out really, really great. Um, then we had River Festival, uh, and it's definitely a hands-on. So many departments help with that. And it was hugely successful. Plus, we had the treasure hunt, and the hunt was found by two officers. So that was super cool, and their little families. Um, that's not who I would have pictured winning it because they were very intense puzzles. So you have some very smart employees over there. Um, so that was awesome to have that. And then also, all week long, from Monday to Friday, uh, Mike Cook and a little bit myself and Commissioner Horricks were entertaining all of the club leads from all of the ATV organizations around the state. Also, Senator Winerton and Representative Chu were able to come and speak with them. And they were here riding our trails and just discussing, um, OHV policy and public lands and, um, you know, where that's going in the future. And we were able to have some great conversations. Director of Outdoor Rec, um, Recreation was here, uh, so it was just, it was a great week. Um, thanks, Matt, for sharing that employee. Uh, and it was, it was just a wonderful week. Um, lots of stuff going on. I think it was a huge benefit to Uwata County. Um, we talk about all this money and where we're going to get it from and stuff, and all these things, um, help with that bottom line to be able to bring in additional tax dollars to our community. So thanks for all the support. Thanks, really kudos to Jeff's, Jess's team. Um, that stage in the park was wonderful, and so many people out there. So takes a lot to put it on, but we definitely reap the benefits from all of it.
Can we talk about the volunteers?
This weekend, um, American Legion is hosting the Northwest Regionals at the High School Diamonds. But there's teams coming from Alaska, Montana, um, Idaho, Wyoming. Uh, I don't remember where else. There's eight teams coming, so, uh, that's going to be really fun. They're staying in our hotels. They'll be eating in our restaurants and playing baseball. So that'll be great.
Leisha's, uh, workload was extremely high this week. She was short a, a full-time volunteer. Her son was on a, on a mission, so.
Yeah. It's okay, my husband stepped in, so.
Yeah, but I seen her husband there, doing a lot, and we do appreciate that. And Leisha and everybody, uh, I guess, you know, you, the kudos, the young unsung heroes. Well, let's, first off, we'll start John over here, you know, in his spare time, he come up with the idea to have this John Wesley Powell idea about a birthday party for him, I guess, or he's not a birthday, but he's, uh, hundred and fiftieth year of coming through here.
Twenty nineteen, it was the hundred and fiftieth, and so, yes, there was the idea, but that was it. It went to the, it went to the group after that.
But there's a lot of stuff I know you worked on and put in there with, you know, and we can't. But there's a lot of stuff I know you worked on and put in there with, you know, and we can't brag enough about Leisha and her crew, and the Buckskin Hills, Derek out there, and Mike Cook, what he done with these, a group that was here. But then, get right down to the really unsung heroes is Jess and his group.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, as we were down there at the Live After Five and, and Friday, and there is not a full garbage can. There is not a, I've never seen an ounce of garbage anywhere, you know, and it was tremendous. You know, they're not doing the fun stuff, but you know what, that place, Sam, you know, at the library, I'm not quite sure he's not here, but what they do and their participation and what took place over there, that, everything was immaculate.
The museum was, the museum was amazing. If people took advantage of that to do the River Fest, but then also get into the museum to see the displays, it was, it was really good.
Jess, if you'll pass that on down to your employees, that we truly recognize it and appreciate them and what they do out there. And I don't know, it was ten o'clock or whatever time, Friday night, and they were still running around there picking up garbage. And, and that place, we, we do it right.
That's right. Uwena County has some really great employees and volunteers as well, so.
And I seen your husband there, the poor guy.
Well, I was just- Sonya Norton was there for several hours, and I don't know-
Pam.
Who else? Pam left, and she was there every night, cleaning up kayaks and the little kids and-
She owes me a hamburger, 'cause she's walking up past there, picking up stuff next to the pond. And I just about bumped her, but I said, oh, I won't do this. And she would've went right into the pond. You know, and it's bad when you start naming off everybody that-
It is, it's hard.
It's hard to catch everybody.
Several people, several people were there and helped, and just kudos to everyone. It was a successful weekend, and yeah.
City, my word, it was, that was a neat, neat deal that went on.
Well, the way my family has put it is, if you're bored in Vernal during the summertime, it's your own freaking fault.
It's your own fault. I guarantee that. It's your own fault.
Because there is a lot of good stuff going on.
Yeah.
And the museum, the Reynolds boat and show, the boat display and the film is still there and will be there for a while.
Yeah, so if you haven't had a chance, get over and check that out, because that's awesome.
Live After Five every Thursday night, what's this?
So there's still two more weeks. Jess and I think there's two more weeks of a Live After Five, so. We, I know there is. There's two more weeks, because then it turns to Uwena County Fair and Dinosaur Days, so there's two more weeks left. Yeah.
Well, we appreciate you, Leisha, as usual, and all that's been done by you and your poor husband and your son that had to go on a mission to get away from you.
Right. It's just a lot of people, but we just appreciate the support, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Um, Sam asked that I mention that the new exhibit and film are showing at the museum right now. That's all.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add is on the volunteer side of it. Out at Buckskin Hills, they've had five welders and their trucks and all their equipment they've donated. They've welded over six thousand feet of pipe. They've got one side of the berms done and three hundred and fifty feet on the second side. So say with that same crew, they could get it done in five more days if they could get them all to volunteer that much. So just wanna say, say thanks to all the volunteers in all these projects. It's, it's amazing what this county does and, and the city, so appreciate it. Now we'll adjourn.
Anybody else we forgot? Okay, I make the motion that we adjourn.
Yeah, we're adjourned.
Again.